The hour of 7:30 having arrived, in a quorum of voters being present, it's my distinction to call to order the 2020 Town of Tuxbury Annual Town Meeting. My name is Todd Johnson, and I'm honored that voters in my town elected me to serve as your town moderator. It is my privilege to do so this evening. These are unusual times due to the pandemic, but we will do our best to make this town meeting a familiar experience, although with some extra precautions. Let me outline a few of those now. Voters are strongly advised to either wear a mask or facial covering a town meeting. A limited supply of masks is available in the check-in area for anyone who needs one. Hand sanitizers have been placed at the entrance and exit of the building. All areas have been suited for one-way traffic flow to avoid face-to-face encounters and maintain a six-foot separation of voters and staff. Directional and spatial arrows have been taped to the floor or walls, as well as on certain seating areas, to indicate six-foot intervals. Microphones will be sanitized after each speaker. Efforts will be made to reduce crowding as the meeting adjourns, and we will direct stag at exit times by row using multiple exit points. Trash and recycling bins will be placed at exits to dispose of used PPE, handouts, et cetera. Socialization in the parking lot post-meeting is discouraged. Take note of the exits at the front and the back. Restrooms are located in the rear. Let the record show that a properly served and returned warrant is in possession. I'm now going to ask you all to stand while we recite the Pledge of Allegiance in an opening moment of silence. I'm going to ask the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Jay Kelly, to come forward and lead us in the pledge.
Where's the flag? All right.
Right in the middle.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for just one moment. I want to call now for a moment of silence to remember all those affected by the coronavirus, especially those throughout our country and here locally who have succumbed to it. I also want to honor the memory of all citizens of Tuxbury and former-town employees who passed away during the past year. I ask now for a moment of silence in honor of their memory. Thank you. Please be seated. We have no announcements tonight, but we do have one of our state elected officials, State Representative David Robertson, is in the area, and he wanted to offer a few comments briefly regarding activity on Beacon Hill on our behalf. Representative?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you for all who came out tonight and ensured that we have a smooth, quick, and productive meeting. In the interest of time, I'll keep this short. And I was asked by our legislative delegation, including Representative Winn and Senator Feingold, to bring you a brief two-minute update on our 2020 legislative accomplishments, as well as what we hope to close out by the year end. So in the realm of education, we passed the Promise Act, which was the largest overhaul of educational funding since 1993. As your state delegation, your school board and superintendents were very vocal in ensuring that it was not tied to enrollment. Thankfully, the success of our legislation will return to Tuxbury several hundred thousand to potentially millions of dollars, depending on the economic rebound as we reopen the state over the next five years. In the realm of public safety, we've recently put in a quarter million dollars in bonds for authorized by the Commonwealth for the purchase of new ambulance, as well as $150,000 for a new rescue bill for our fire department. We're hoping that with a volatile stock market, the interest rates demanded on the free market for bonds will drop, meaning that it will be fiscally wise to take advantage of a lower interest rate payment now and save the money rather than purchasing it up on the upswing. After 53 years, Livingston Street Park is finally Tuxbury's. It was finally permanently passed to the town, and as part of that, too, we used this previous year's budget earmarks for pedestrian safety and crossing repayment for the use of families and young individuals down there. Route 38, as I said before, the perennial issue for everyone in the audience. Recently, within the transportation bond issuance, we established half a million dollars for the design, redesign, and improvement of the signal improvements at Pleasant Street in Main in anticipation of our new fire station and elementary school to improve flow, as well as $400,000 in bond issuances to redesign the Main Street corridor from Colonial Drive to Shawshin Street. For those in South Tuxbury right now, you'll probably see soon the resumption of construction improving to three intersections in the traffic flow around South Street, Shawshin, and Main. And then next spring, we'll be breaking ground to redo Main Street with a design and overhaul from Colonial Street up to Old Boston Road. Lastly, the three things which are still on our radar to try to wrap up this year. When it comes to sewage and water, the House of Representatives passed a major Greenworks bill, which we hope will incorporate stormwater and wastewater grants so that we may take advantage of it, help pay down our bonds early, as well as create substantial improvements. The Tuxbury Cemetery is in need of expansion. It's an ongoing issue that we have with the state, but we're hopefully secure to expand that, so, in other words, a mess de deputat, we don't have to bury him feet-first to save room. And then lastly, we're attempting to reallocate money initially set for Fosker Fields and instead to pivot to Livingston Street to upgrade the recreational facilities there. So, in the interest of time, again, I'm keeping this short. So, I'm six foot eight. I'm not hard to find. If you have anything specific, please feel free to ask me. And if anyone that still has a survey, I ask kindly that you return it so that we know what you, the residents' priorities are this coming year. So, thank you very much.
Robertson. Okay, once again, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to your town meeting. I ask now that everyone take a moment to silence your phones. I request that everyone up here to my left and right, out of respect for all of you, not be texting during the meeting. And I ask that you not text them during the meeting, so they're not tempted to do so. As we begin our meeting, I want to take a moment to talk about our ground rule. Town meeting is the legislative body for our community, where we work together to debate the merits of the articles within the warrant before you. Please take a moment to refer to glossary and terms of the statute of law. Because Tuxbury has an open town meeting, each registered voter is eligible to vote on fiscal issues, zoning changes, bylaw amendments, and other matters affecting the town as presented in the warrant. Visitors may attend the meeting and sit only in the reserved visitors section. Members of the media may sit in the visitors' section or at the press table. This meeting is being recorded. As we move through the articles, presenters on the articles will be allowed to speak first on the article before I open the floor to debate. A voter desiring to speak should approach the microphone in the middle of the room here, await recognition by me, and identify oneself by name and street address for the record. I ask members of all boards to do the same. Each speaker is allowed up to five minutes to speak on an article. Please speak clearly into the microphone so the body can hear you. I will let you know when you have 30 seconds left on your time. When you hear my voice, it's your signal to wrap up your remarks. Speakers may disagree with any official, with any other voter, volunteer, or any board. However, as many know, we have a strong tradition in Tuxbury of maintaining a respectful dialogue during town meeting. I will do everything I can to ensure that each speaker has shown respect and that your questions are answered. I ask that all town meeting attendees kindly do the same. Residents refusing to conduct themselves in a manner fitting this body will be asked to cede the floor and potentially be escorted from the meeting in egregious cases. I hope I don't have to enforce that rule. Let's work together to address the issues before this body fairly and efficiently, and perhaps learn some things about our town and our fellow residents in the process. I will accept a motion to move the question. However, I reserve the right to make sure that we at least have had some dialogue about the motion. All questions on the floor are to be directed to the moderator. In Tuxbury, we have a tradition of not requiring a second to any motion as we presume that the moderator seconds all motions. If you are amending an article, we will take action and vote on the amendment first. Amendments must be presented to the town clerk in writing. If the amendment passes, it will then become part of the main motion, and we will discuss it. If the amendment does not pass, then we go back to the main motion as it is written in the warrant. We will be discussing the budget tonight. The Board of Selectmen, the School Committee, Finance Committee, the Town Manager and his finance team, and the many department heads deserve a significant amount of credit for the work that went into this budget and to have the numbers here before us tonight, especially in light of unusual work conditions over the last few months. Residents were previously mailed a warrant. When you came in tonight, you were offered the warrant again with the articles we will be discussing tonight, a handout with the Finance Committee recommendations, and a supplemental handout from the Town Manager with detailed explanations for a number of articles and funds. Scrivener's errors, if any, are also noted in that document. Please be sure that your voter ribbon is showing so that counters can see when we take standing counts. At this point, I want to ask counters to please go to your sections. Ladies and gentlemen, please take note of the counter for your section. When we do a standing count, it is important that no one be standing in the gym, and there will be no entering or exiting the gym while the vote is in process, unless it is an emergency. It is critical that you pay attention to your counter and sit down once counted. Your counter will nod at you when you've been counted. Is there anyone new to town meeting yet, Tom? We welcome you to town meeting and hope that you enjoy this process. For all of you that come faithfully, especially under these circumstances, I thank you for your continued presence this evening and your commitment to our community. Sitting up here to my left and right are the various boards of the town with elected and appointed members such as Selectmen, Town Council, Planning Board, Board of Health, Department Heads, Finance Committee, School Committee, Library Trustees, Shawshin Tech School Committee, and Housing Authority. Let me at this time introduce Mr. Rob Kuzmersky, the chairman of the Finance Committee. The sole job of the Finance Committee is to advise town meeting. Mr. Kuzmersky will present motions on most articles, except for a petitioner or non-voter. Is the appropriate party. Mr. Kuzmersky may have a motion to read the reading of the warrant articles.
So moved, Mr. Moderator.
All those in favor of waiving the articles, the reading of the articles, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. I also want to take a moment to speak about guests. Do we have anyone in the gym who's not registered to vote here in Tuxbury? I don't see anyone. Non-voters are not allowed to address the meeting without prior consent. Just a plea we give from non-voters who are employees, volunteers, or advisors to the town. Mr. Kuzmersky may have a motion to permit the following persons to address the meeting: Non-voter-appointed members of any town or regional committees or task forces, non-voter employees of the town of Tuxbury, including the Tuxbury Public Schools and Town Council.
Mr. Moderator, I move to allow certain anticipated nonresidents to speak on issues, including Assistant Town Manager Steve Sadwick, Fire Chief Mike Hazel, Superintendent of Schools Chris Malone, School Budget Manager David Libby, DPW Superintendent Brian Gilbert, Town Engineer Kevin Hardiman, Town Council Kevin Feeley, and others, some of whom may be asked to answer resident questions.
Thank you. Is there any debate? All those in favor of the motion as stated, please indicate by stating aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, the motion carries. If there are any other non-voters with us tonight, they may only speak upon further motion and consent of the town meeting. In accordance with town bylaw, tonight we will address the first two sections of the warrant. On Wednesday night, we will address Section 3 pertaining to zoning articles. I do want to inform town meeting that earlier today, the zoning bylaw committee voted to withdraw Articles 27 and 28, and will be offering motions to withdraw both articles on Wednesday night to town meeting. We proceed now to Section 1, Article 1. Due to the pandemic, the annual town election typically held the first Saturday in April was held on Tuesday, June 16, 2020. A total of 1,058 voters, or 4.6% of eligible voters, cast ballots in the election. Elected this year were Jay Kelly to the Board of Selectmen, Keith Sullivan and Scott Wilson to the School Committee, Eric Ryder to the Planning Board, Charles Rue to the Board of Health, Lorraine Carrier and Patrick Joyce to the Board of Library Trustees, Robert Demurris to the Housing Authority, and Todd Johnson as moderator. Please take a moment in welcoming each of them to their new positions. We do not vote on this article because we've already completed the election. We will move now to Section 2, Article 2. Mr. Kuzmersky, do you have a motion?
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 2.
Careful with that. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. I'll ask all those in favor of adoption of Article 2, signify by stating aye. Any opposed? That's a unanimous vote. Article 3 is what we call the Consent Calendar. I'm going to call out each of the four articles in Article 3. If any town meeting member wishes to debate any of the four, when I call the number, please indicate by calling "hold", at which point we will set that article aside and we will take it up at the back end of the warrant this evening. Article 3-23. Article 3-24. Article 3-25. Article 3-26. Okay, we will place 3-25 in its correct place in the warrant, and we'll address that later. Mr. Kuzmersky, do you have a motion on the three other articles?
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Articles 3-23, 3-24, and 3-26.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adoption of the Consent Calendar for Articles 3-23, 3-24, and 3-26, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That's a unanimous vote. Article 4, Mr. Kuzmersky, do you have a motion?
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 4.
Thank you. As is our custom, in accordance with town's bylaws, as we talk about the general fund budget, I'm going to read the general sections of the budget in the page number. And I ask that if anyone in the gym wishes to debate or discuss any of the sections, when I call it out, please call out "debate", and we will hold that aside. We'll come back and discuss that in a few moments. First section is General Government on pages 7 to 8. Finance Department, pages 8 to 9. Community Services, page 9. Council on Aging, page 10. Facilities, page 10. Library, page 10. Planning and Development, pages 10 to 11. Public Safety, page 11. School Departments, page 12. Department of Public Works, pages 12 to 13. Unclassified, page 14. Transfers, page 14. Okay, we have no debate. The total budget to be voted in your motion, Mr. Kuzmersky, was $121,560,000. Do you want to make that again? Okay. Yep, please do.
It's not on my cheek.
Page 16.
Last page. 121, 560,000.
Yep, you got it.
Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 4 for the budget in the amount of $121,560,466.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? That's a unanimous vote. The next four articles pertain to enterprise funds for sewer, water, stormwater, and cable television. Move to Article 5.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 5, raise and appropriate and transfer $6,623,932 for the purpose of the article.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? It's a unanimous vote. Article 6, Mr. Kuzmersky.
Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 6, raise and appropriate $7,346,811 for the purpose of the article.
Is there any discussion on Article 6? Hearing none. All those in favor of Article 6, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That's a unanimous vote. Article 7, Mr. Kuzmersky.
Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 7, raise and appropriate $1,162,940 for the purpose of the article.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of Article 7, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Article 7 adopted unanimously.
Article 8, Mr. Kuzmersky. Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 8, raise and appropriate $392,219 for the purpose of the article.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adoption of Article 8, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Article 8 is adopted unanimously. Article 9, Mr. Kuzmersky.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 9, transfer $95,000 from the Water Enterprise Fund retained earnings for the purpose of the article.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor of Article 9, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Article 9 is adopted unanimously. Article 10, Mr. Kuzmersky.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 10, transfer $55,000 from Sewer Enterprise Fund retained earnings for the purpose of the article.
Is there any discussion on Article 10? Hearing none. All those in favor of adoption of Article 10, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That will be a unanimous vote. Article 11 is a borrowing article. I'm going to ask Mr. Kuzmersky to offer a motion, and the motion is printed in the warrants and so forth. Mr. Kuzmersky.
The Finance Committee moves that the town hereby appropriates the sum of $1,500,000 for the cost of installing and replacing water lines in the town and for the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the town treasurer with the approval of the Selectmen is hereby authorized to borrow said sum under the pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 8 (5) of the Massachusetts General Laws or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Any premium received by the town upon sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be -- maybe, excuse me, maybe, hello? May be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of General Laws, thereby reducing the amount of the authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none. This is a borrowing article, so it requires a two-thirds vote. We'll do that by standing count. I ask counters to go to your section, and I ask all those in favor of the article to please stand. All those opposed, please stand. I see no one rising. Yep, we have a unanimous vote, 100 votes in favor. Article 12, Mr. Kuzmersky.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 12, transfer $5,113.92 from bond premiums to reduce tax exemption debt principal.
Is there any discussion on Article 12? Hearing no one rising. All those in favor of Article 12 signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That would be a unanimous vote. Article 13, Mr. Kuzmersky.
Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 13, transfer $52,500 from the overlay surplus for the purpose of the article.
Is there any discussion?
Finance Committee moves to adopt Article Thirteen, transfer $52,500 from the overlay surplus for the purpose of the article.
Is there any discussion on Article Thirteen? I see no one rising. I ask that all those in favor of Article Thirteen, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous vote for Article Thirteen. Article Fourteen, Mr. Kuzmersky.
Finance Committee moves to adopt Article Fourteen.
Is there any discussion? I'll ask all those in favor of Article Fourteen, please, oh, I'm sorry. Ma'am, come to the microphone, if you don't mind, so we can all hear you. Okay, was, are we talking Article Fourteen? All right. Mr. Montori, can you do us a favor and explain Article Fourteen?
Could you give me the question? The question was to explain Article Fourteen. Article Fourteen is the, is an article we have every year to allocate the funds from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund that we have. Trust Fund was developed and funded by payment in lieu of fees from developers who, instead of building affordable housing, paid into this fund a certain amount per unit. Previously, back in 2013, we also transferred funds from CPA funds into the Housing Trust Fund. And each year, this article is brought forward outlining the starting balance of the Trust Fund, and outlining what the funds could be used for each year, which is the creation of affordable units in the community, or buying down units in the community, in the community to create affordable units. It's part of the statute that developed the Trust Fund in town.
Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor of Article Fourteen, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's a unanimous vote. Article Fifteen, Mr. Kuzmersky.
Finance Committee moves to adopt Article Fifteen.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Fifteen, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's a unanimous vote. Article Sixteen, Mr. Kuzmersky.
Finance Committee moves to adopt Article Sixteen, appropriate $40,000 from Community Preservation Fund Open Space Reserve for the purpose of the article.
Any discussion on Article Sixteen? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Sixteen, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article Seventeen, Mr. Kuzmersky.
Finance Committee moves to adopt Article Seventeen.
Is there any discussion on Article Seventeen? I see no one rising, all those in favor of Article Seventeen, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article Seventeen is adopted unanimously. Article Eighteen, Mr. Kuzmersky.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article Eighteen.
Is there any discussion on Article Eighteen? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Eighteen, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That would be a unanimous vote. I want to draw your attention to Article Nineteen. You're going to note in the warrant that deletions of text are noted with strikeouts, and additions of text are in red. Mr. Kuzmersky, do you have a motion on Article Nineteen?
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article Nineteen.
Is there any discussion? I see no one rising. All those in favor of Article Nineteen, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article Nineteen is adopted unanimously. Is there someone here from a petitioner group that wants to speak to Article Twenty? Mr. Kuzmersky, did you, the Finance Committee take action on this article?
We did, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee met earlier before this meeting to discuss this one and recommend adoption unanimously, five zero.
You're making that in the form of a motion?
And now I would like to make a motion. The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article Twenty.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? About Article Twenty? Ma'am, if you don't mind, just go to the microphone. So everyone can hear you. Thank you.
Sorry, I was trying to avoid the microphone.
I know, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry about that. Laura Kaplan, 11 Lenox Road. Just a question on Article Twenty, because I'm a little confused on the handout, the yellow handout. It said tabled, but it's, he's saying that it's now being recommended, so I wanted to make sure that I didn't miss anything on that, if I may.
Yeah, so when we had the public hearing, we had tabled the issue to the meeting that happens just before this, because we wanted to get a little more feedback from the Conservation Commission. And so, like I said, when we met earlier, we had no issues, understanding that, understanding that the Conservation Commission had no problems with the article either, so we voted unanimously five zero to recommend adoption.
Okay, so, so this handout is not updated for the today's?
It was printed before. Just before this meeting.
But I understand, I'm just asking, so, because I've been using this as my guidance before I ask a question, so, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll ask all those in favor of adoption of Article Twenty, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article Twenty is adopted unanimously.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, Town Manager, elected officials, committee members, public workers, new chief on taxpayers and fellow residents. George Ferdinand, 56 Pratt Street. My article has to do with, when I moved here, what I look at is master plans, the zoning bylaws, zoning bylaws, town charter, town bylaws, not just of Tewksbury, but the surrounding communities. I thought this was a good one that Bill Ricka put forward, and number twenty-two. But, to try to summarize it, basically, instead of having a special town meeting, I mean, a special town election, it would save the taxpayers that cost. Number two, in Bill Ricka's vacancy filling, they look for 10% of the votes from the amount of votes taken for that position. And I thought that was a little low, so I put 25%. I'll just give an example, we only have one, one challenge in this election that just passed. Keith got approximately, I'm just throwing this out there, about 50%, Sarah got about 40%, and 10% didn't vote for either one. So, so if, if anybody on that committee could not fulfill or decided to move, retire, quit, or die, which is obviously not something you want to talk about, but any of those reasons to happen, then the second person, which was Sarah, would fulfill that term till end, till next year. The third part I wanted to mention is that the word appearance, it only takes out and removes the appearance of a political filling of such vacancy. Thank you.
You have a motion? Mr. Ferdinand, do you have a motion? Thank you, sir.
Hi, Daniel Ronan, 1,001 Whipple Road.
Thank you.
Massachusetts General Laws, Part One, Title Seven, Chapter Forty-One, Section Ten, provides the procedure on how to fill vacancies. I believe this article is not compliant with the Massachusetts General Laws, and will be rejected upon review by the Attorney General. I encourage you to not support this article. Furthermore, this article removes your choice to elected officials. Imagine a scenario in which you vote for who you think is the best person for the job, but unfortunately, they don't win. And then, six months later, there's a vacancy. But in those six months, that person has radically changed their views. They've changed political parties, or lied about their political parties, or has just gone on, you know, tirades, has announced that, you know, has proven themselves to be racist or homophobic. Do you want that person to still be automatically put into that position? I think this article removes that right to hold another election and choose who you want, actually want to be up there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jay Kelly, 22 Calley, Lee Lane. Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make a motion for indefinite postponement. Couple of problems with the article. One is, as the previous speaker mentioned, I think state law determines how we fill a vacancy. The second thing is, this, this essentially says, we're going to automatically appoint a loser to a position. Sometime that loser, a lot of voters have decided would be a pretty good candidate. Other times, and I've seen this a lot, the loser's votes are throwaway votes, that someone didn't like the actual winner, and as a result, gave a vote to someone else who we didn't know, didn't know a thing about. And that's no way to pick a person for a position. So, I think there's really no good reason for doing this. A procedure is in place, it's a pretty good procedure, it's not perfect, but it works pretty well. And this procedure, as presented in the warrant, has some really bad flaws, so please vote no on this article. Thank you.
Sir?
Mr. Moderator, Joe Gill, 12 Ellington Road. I stand with Mr. Kelly in opposition to this article. First of all, this is Tewksbury, not Bill Ricka. The charter has served us well, and until we find a problem with it, I recommend that we stay where we have it. Recommend indefinite postponement. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ferdinand? All of the voters have spoken, give you last bite at the apple.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask the first gentleman, what was his position? His title or something?
He was in opposition to the article.
No, but did he say he was like a lawyer or something? I'm just trying to find out.
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, I don't mind going, the state, if people want to reject that, that's fine, but I want to just mention, I'm not really, I just, I try to keep myself under control every meeting I come to, but I am like a rebel that wants to make things happen and change. But the state, like a homosexual or something, is going to end up changing.
Excuse me, sir. Let's have, let's have conduct with some respect.
No, a person's going to change their views on a certain thing? That, that's just, that's disgusting.
You have, do you have a comment around this article?
No, I think it's disgusting what he just said. The other, and the other gentleman's that, you know, the other thing I want to just point out to folks, is that two or three people in this town get together every election, and they say, you run for this, and you outrun for it next time, and you know what? They don't have the guts to run against each other. Instead, they'll do that, and somebody like Sarah Steele bust her butt to get a label.
Mr. Ferdinand, your comments are out of order.
No, they're not.
We have a motion for indefinite postponement. That is a negative motion. Indefinite postponement is a motion to defeat the article. If you wish to defeat the article, vote yes. If you wish to vote on the adoption of the article, vote no. I will ask all those in favor of indefinite postponement, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That's a unanimous vote. The article is indefinitely postponed. That brings us to Article Twenty-Two.
George Ferdinand, 56 Pratt Street. Article Twenty-Two is a non-binding resolution, and obviously, the first thing somebody's going to say is, why do you even want to put something in that's non-binding, not legal? But again, if you're looking, if you follow anything in the state, what's going on is Wayland and Amherst have voted that people that are not, that are not citizens, they should be able to vote. The next thing that's going on is places like Cambridge, Boston. Some of them, Needham, Newton, are all considering this. The two that have put it forward have languished in committee at the state level, and the state would have to vote in favor. And the only reason why I'm bringing it forward is that we tell, obviously, state and federal law says you have to be a citizen, and that we're telling our elected officials, basically, that when it comes to a vote, if it does, many different towns or cities adopt this, and they have to vote at the state level or the federal level, that we say, as a community, not just as an individual, that we oppose it, I mean, that we support this.
Thank you, this is Burke Kinsey from 47 Lowell Street. I just wanted to strongly object to this article. I am actually a new citizen myself, that's where I'm coming from, and I am a new voter. I was, prior to that, eight-year resident of Tewksbury, where I paid my taxes, and my school, my kids went to school, and I had no vote, no say, in, in Town Matters. And I believe, you know, seeking to, for example, in the wording of this, of this article, there's a thing that says, seek to obtain citizenship, and I believe that is showing some ignorance of the process. My process actually took 13 years while I was a resident living here and paying my taxes, and kids going to school. So, I think this is hostile article against our neighbors, and I took some statistics just to, just to show you, it seems around Massachusetts, 10.9% people of people, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, are non-citizens, Lowell is 11.8. So I estimate that Tewksbury should have about 3,300 non-citizen residents, which, passing this article, would essentially say, we do not care about our neighbors. So I move to, to reject this article on those grounds.
Thank you, sir.
Daniel Ronan, 1,001 Whipple Road. I'll cut mine short, because that last speaker said a lot of what I was going to mention. This article just doesn't seem welcoming, it seems anti-outside, and I don't think that should be what we promote in Tewksbury. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ferdinand, do you have a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion that we adopt Article-
Come to the mic, please.
Thank you. I make a motion that we accept Article Twenty-Two.
Thank you.
Melissa Gleaton, 697 Shawshank. I'd like to make a motion for indefinite postponement.
Thank you. Just going to clean that mic one more time for you. Just going to clean that mic one more time for you. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I don't want to make this too complicated, but right now, I guess, we could have the legislature say that every city and town in Massachusetts—and there's 351 of them—could have its own set of rules as to who can—who could vote in the town and who cannot vote in the town, at least on the—on the limits of non-citizens. In the early 1900s, in Tewksbury, my great aunt was a registered voter. So she voted in Tewksbury, where most women in the country could not vote. That was great for my aunt, but I'm not sure that it's a great thing where different groups of people can vote in elections in different—in different towns across the country. I don't know how I feel about it, but the issue is not as simple as people presented it. I'm going to decide how to vote when you take the vote, but I'd ask people to think about it a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? I don't see anyone standing. We have a motion for indefinite postponement for Article 22. A motion is a negative motion. Indefinite postponement is a motion to defeat the article. If you wish to defeat the article, vote yes. If you wish to vote on the adoption of the article, vote no. All those in favor of indefinite postponement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. Indefinite postponement prevails. Okay, we removed Article 3-25 from the consent calendar, so we will take that matter up at this point in time. Mr. Kuzmersky, do you have a motion on 3-25? The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 3-25. Thank you. Is there any discussion? Thank you. Just go to the mic, please.
Laura Kaplan at 11 Monaca Road. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. On Article 3-25, for the Chapter 90 funds, I was wondering if the Town Manager could address us as to how much was awarded to the town for not only, I know, the installation of sidewalks, but the maintenance of sidewalks, the purchase of equipment, and the roadways. But I'm just curious of the amount, again, that was awarded to the town of Tewksbury from the state this year.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Each year, we receive approximately $980,000 for Chapter 90 funds. We have been using the Chapter 90 funds for roadways, and we've used it—for drainage, not used sidewalks, because we've had—we've allocated town funds for our sidewalk program. Currently, we have $325,000 in our sidewalk budget. The next phase of our sidewalk projects is going to be the first phase of Shawshank Street, approximately two miles. For fiscal year '21, we had brought forward, in the capital budget, $250,000 for Shawshank Street Phase 2, but we're going to delay that until the fall, until we better understand the finances that we'll have from the state as well as our own. And then, over the next five years, we're planning to spend a little over $2 million in sidewalk installation throughout the community at various locations. That'll come from general fund money as well as state grant money that we'll be applying for. So that sums up the actual plans for our sidewalk installation. We are looking to use our Chapter 90 funds specifically to address roadway work and use the general fund money for sidewalk work. We don't have any funds within the budget earmarked for sidewalk repairs or maintenance. Over the past year or two, we've purchased sidewalk plows for our maintenance of sidewalks during the winter. But other than the money I just outlined for you, that's the sidewalk funding and sidewalk plan for the next five years.
So I'm clear—I apologize, Town Manager, but you can indulge me. The figure, again, for this year was $980,000.
Nine—$980 for Chapter 90 money, and we're going to specifically dedicate that to roadway work.
While I know roadway work is definitely a need in our community, I just want to say that I hope that it's taken into consideration that the Chapter 90 funds initially was put on the books by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for the installation of sidewalks and maintenance of sidewalks, and then was added the other items. And the reason the other items were added is if we already had sidewalks, which unfortunately, our community still needs. So I very much appreciate that being taken seriously, and I'm glad to hear that a grant is still in the works for the $2 million. Thank you.
Thank you for moving the microphone up for me. Representative Robertson, 41 David Morris Road. Ms. Kaplan, I also want to add a thanks to Richard and the Select Board. During our infrastructure bond bill issuance, we did indeed put in a potential amendment to ask to expedite sidewalks, both in Tewksbury as in Wilmington. Have our own discussion with the Chair of Transportation and the Chair of the Bond Issuance. We were told that we were asking for—I don't want to say a little much, there's no such thing as a little much—but the total amount. In the discussions with Mr. Montori and some of the other local officials, we elected to go with the intersections, simply because of the traffic impact, again, of the fire station, the proposed elementary school coming up. So we did attempt for the sidewalks. We'll be putting it again. And then also, another minor note I want to make with the DOT projects coming up for Main Street, particularly where these gaps are from the sidewalk. The Commonwealth Commonwealth now requires what they call the Complete Streets Program and encourages biking, pedestrian access and such. So along the major arteries where we're going to be utilizing these grants, they're going to pursue sidewalks and pedestrian crossings as well. So you've been an advocate every year, though. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing no one rise, I will ask at this time, all those in favor of Article 3-25, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That will be a unanimous vote. All right. Believe it or not, at 8:29, we have now completed Sections 1 and 2 of the warrant. Per a town bylaw, we will take up Section 3 on Wednesday evening. Annual Town Meeting will reconvene at 7:30 p.m. I want to once again inform Town Meeting that earlier today, the Zoning Bylaw Committee voted to withdraw Articles 27 and 28, and will be offering motions to withdraw both Articles on Wednesday night to Town Meeting. Once adjourned, we ask that you please follow the arroded walkways, so we can maintain social distancing. I want to thank all of you who made the effort to be here in these unusual times to help manage your community. Special Town Meeting will also convene Wednesday, June 24, at 7 p.m. Mr. Kuzmersky, may I have a motion to adjourn Annual Town Meeting until Wednesday, June 24, 2020, at 7:30 p.m.?
No movement, Mr. Moderator.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. We are now adjourned. Have a good evening.